Evening everyone, welcome to the full council meeting held today on Thursday, the 4th of March 2021. It's now 6:15, so we will commence and I believe there are four issues with regard to questions from the public. Adam, can I hand over to you please?
Yeah, of course, Tomma. We've received concerns regarding the Alexander Park football pitches. This residence reporting that there's quite a lot of dog mess on the pitch, constant rubbish in the pitches generally haven't been maintained. Obviously, this would be primarily an issue for Northumberland County Council who do have an agreement with them for these pitches. I don't know if any of the councillors want to comment on that.
I would just like to say it is wholly the responsibility of the county council. And we could raise it at next week's partnership meeting with them. Okay.
I will obviously pass this on to the resident who's contacted us to make them aware.
Thank you, Adam.
The next question we received is related to the eastfield entrance features which are to be installed through the councillor connect programme. The stone entrance features that are similar to the ones around other parts of the town. I believe that Daryl may have an update on this.
Yeah, Adam, they're due to be installed, we commence on the 15th of this month. It is outlined in my report, but yeah, that is the update, that's where we are. The anticipated date for those works to start is the 15th, we commence on the 15th.
Thank you. And we've also received a few questions from the residents of Carlby Way in relation to tree work, which is currently being commenced on the A192 tree belt. As trees are responsibility of Northumberland County Council, their questions have been forwarded on to NCC's tree surgeon. And again, I'll make the residents aware of this.
Thank you, Adam. Oh, Christine. Christine, you're on mute, darling.
Oh man, I've got to announce. Regarding the entrance features, it's good news to hear, Daryl. I'm really pleased about it. Have a look at some flower planting. I'll get them to you as soon as possible. I've had a look at the port and other things, I'm not really keen on them, so I'll find something else. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And finally, we have received a few questions which are very similar. I believe these are majority people affiliated with, in some way or other, from Cramley United Football Club, expressing their concerns over the asset transfer of the Eastfield Pavilion.
Could I respond to this, Chair?
Yes, please, if you would, yes.
I've seen these questions and it appears that they are from members of the club, indeed, it is obvious they are from members of the club. And they're making certain accusations, which in my opinion are a total misunderstanding of what is actually happening. It may be that it's rather than a misunderstanding, it's misinformation being provided to the people submitting questions. We have been through these issues with CUFC, the Cramley United Football Club, with members of their management committee. And we had hoped that the outcome of that meeting would have been relayed accurately to members. Now, looking at these questions, that clearly isn't the case, so I'd like to put on record an accurate history of the asset transfer and what it means for CUFC. Now, if you allow me, Chair, it'd take a few minutes, but I think it's important that we do actually set out the facts, rather than the misinformation that is being provided to club members currently. So firstly-
Can I just say, because Steve's just joined us, because he'll be interested in this, we're discussing the Eastfield Pavilion as questions received from the public. Sorry, Bob.
Just to make it clear that Steve does have an interest in this matter and it's probably best if he doesn't participate in the discussion. Just the facts, as I say, I'll go through as quickly as I possibly can. When the potential asset transfer of the Eastfield Pavilion and the associated sports pitches was promoted, it was actually CUFC who were invited to take over the facility, which meant that the building and almost sole use of the pitches. In return, they would be responsible for running costs of around about nine thousand pounds. And of course, they would be required to refurbish the pavilion and manage its community use. Now, the club at that point declined the offer. Subsequently, the town council was approached to say, would we be interested in an asset transfer? Which we did accept and you'll all recall the meeting in detail, the implications of the transfer. And that we had had negotiations with Cramleyton Rockets at that time. And that in return for a long-term lease from the town council, the Rockets undertook to refurbish and extend the pavilion and to ensure that it was available for community use and to manage the community use of the building. And also the Rockets agreed they would meet all costs associated with the future running inhabitants of the pavilion and the pitches. Now, what the nature, the intonation of the question, of the questions we received is that the Rockets are taking over all of the pitches at Eastfield. Now, that's not the reality, because the Rockets would simply take one pitch, which is currently used by CUFC juniors. And all of the pitches will remain available for use by CUFC. So the change is actually not that significant. Now, subsequent to that, I understand that CUFC were offered the transfer of the pitches that would remain available to them. And the requirement would be that they would maintain it, maintain those pitches and the surrounding areas. They were keen to take on the pitches, but they weren't keen to take on the surrounding areas, which would mean parts of Eastfield would have been the county council would have been required to maintain them, whilst the football club enjoyed the benefits of rent-free pitches, which they would maintain. They also, I think, objected to the continued public access to these pitches, which is a requirement of the asset transfer. So in short, the club also declined the asset transfer of four pitches. They basically want to have a facility maintained for them, which they will rent at a very reasonable rent, if I may say. Now, since then, the, I'm sure by the county council, that CUFC have been offered alternative pitches for the use by the Cramleyton Football Club's juniors. I don't know the outcome of those, of that situation, but they have been made several offers of alternative pitches to replace the one pitch that they will lose, which will be taken by the Cramleyton Rockets. Another claim in the question is that the loss of one pitch will result in, one of the questions says, hundreds of players being displaced. The management committee said that it would displace 150 juniors. Well, my arithmetic doesn't run to the equation they used to arrive at a figure of 150, because if you have one pitch which is used at a maximum of four times a week, then surely the maximum number of children who would be affected by that is around about 50, certainly not 150. So their claims of 150 or hundreds in the case of the questions posed is totally wrong and needs to be corrected by the club. So that's more or less the situation. I would say that when we posed this asset transfer to the town council, it was unanimously approved by everyone at the meeting. Everyone thought the proposal was very sound and it stood up well and it would offer a tremendous community facility to the people of Eastfield, which we still feel will be the case when the asset transfer actually goes through. And I'd also say finally, Chair, that there has been a news release outlining what is going on and it has produced a very, very good response from local residents. So that's our response to the questions posed. I think it's unfortunate that misinformation is being spread. I hope not by the management committee, but I don't know who else has access to that information. And that would be our position in a written response.
Thank you, Bob. Very clear. Yes, Adam.
Thanks, Matt. Just to let you know, a member of the public appears to be joining the meeting. I'll let them in and just explain the, obviously, the rules to view in the meeting and then if we can carry on, if that's all right.
Okay, yes, fine.
Hi, Chris. Thanks for joining the meeting. Just to let you know that you can view the meeting, but you're not allowed to participate in any way. Thank you.
Okay, well, that appears to be the end of the questions from the general public. It's half past six. May I proceed with the agenda? Is that okay with everyone? Take that as a yes. Okay, agenda item number one, apologies for absence, please, Adam.
We have apologies from councillor Mitchison, councillor Norman Dunbar and councillor Hird.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number two, town mayor's announcements. Just a couple of things, I would like to just say we are now so close to the end of this virus. And please can I ask that you continue to follow the guidelines by washing your hands, wearing a mask, keeping socially distance, even if you have had the vaccine, please. And can I just thank everyone for the last four years and hadn't sincerely hoped that we will see you in the next term? And just, if I'm allowed to say, vote wisely. Okay, moving on, agenda item number three, minutes of the last meeting, please. Can we agree these minutes? Thank you, Christine. Proposed by Christine and seconded by Mark. Thank you. Item, agenda item number four, disclosure of interests. Are there any disclosures of interest? Yes, Barry.
Just on item about your link, I'm a Northumberland County councillor and I believe it's Northumberland County Council funds in that, but I think it's just an item for interest, but so that's what I'm saying there.
That's Nathan's presentation, yes?
Correct.
Okay, yes, Wayne.
Just to belt and braces, if I can, please. There is an item relating to Horton Park play area later on, which both Helen and I will have an interest in. And of course, any county councillor who is on this new thing would naturally be subject to their publicly available declarations on anything to do with the county council.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, agenda item number five, a presentation given by Nathan Fuller of Northumberland County Council. And please, would you give us an update on the progress of the Yorling building? Please, Nathan.
Yes, thank you and thank you for having us. I'm really pleased to be here to give you an update and take any questions you might have. So I don't know what everybody knows, I've obviously dealt with some people in the room tonight, but I thought it would just be useful to give you a little bit of context and update in terms of where the works are at and how we're progressing. So I see you'll all be aware, I'm sure, the Cramleyton Community Hub is the former Yorling building. So there's been some refurbishment works happening over the past few months and they are progressing along quite nicely now. There's been some little delays along the road just with contractors and some delays because of COVID, but the work is progressing quite nicely now. So the inside of the building, in some respects, won't be drastically different to what you will have known as previously, but there has been some work done just to kind of bring that back up to the modern standard that would really like the hub to be at. So just to give you a brief sort of run through, the ground floor of the building is primarily going to contain a community cafe space as well as the primary bulk of the library. So the library will be going back in, you know, a much bigger space than what it has had in Concordia. And I know just from my perspective, when I've had conversations with some of the community, that seems to be well received, which is good. On the middle floor, there will be quite a lot of open plan space as well as some closed off small meeting rooms for consultation type activity. And the open plan spaces is very much intended to be for small collaboration opportunities, so small groups, small workshops and similar activity. The top floor is going to be relatively similar, apart from that's going to be slightly more focused on larger collaboration spaces for potentially training, bigger workshops, bigger events and activities. So the work is really progressing nicely now. We are looking at the building being operational in April, which is quite exciting. Now, obviously, we are going to have to do that carefully and in line with the lifting of the restrictions, so it is going to be a phased and quite organic approach to that. And what we are doing in the meantime is having lots of conversations with the community and organisations, so I'm obviously working quite a lot with Maggie and Steve, but also lots of community and voluntary organisations in Cramleyton to understand, first of all, what they would like to offer in the building, but also what support they might need. So we've got a list of those and we're busy understanding and supporting them to look at what they need and how we can put that in place so that the building can be used at the right and appropriate time. We are also going to be looking at doing some public consultation to understand what the public want from that space. So again, we'll work quite closely with Maggie and Steve to kind of develop some of the questions on that to make sure that we'll get some really qualitative and quantitative responses and to aid us to allow for, you know, a substantial offer in time to come. Now, like I say, the restrictions around COVID means that the operations from April may be minimal in some respects, but what we're hoping is that that'll allow overtime for the building to grow quite organically and hopefully, you know, in months to come and as restrictions continue to ease, there'll be quite an extensive offer there, whether that be, you know, exercise, mental health support, you know, just general support of any kind, which will hopefully provide quite a safe space for the community. So it's very much a building that is going to be for Cramleyton and the people that live there, for use by people who operate there. And so we've had lots of positive conversations. There are questions that we're getting from some of the organisations that we're speaking to and we're busy working through those at the moment, just to clarify some of the, some of the kind of really important, but sort of quite specific points. So all quite positive. I'm really making some steps forward now and looking forward to it opening. And I'm happy to take any questions if anybody's got any.
Great, it's very exciting. Good news about the library.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. Any questions, anyone? Wayne?
Hello.
And then Bob.
Hi there. So as Nathan will know, this came about, a lot of this work came about from the money which I was able to secure from the North of Tyne Combined Authority, when I used to be sitting on the cavernous in the good old days there. So there's half a million pounds coming to Northumberland. And part of that money is going to be used to support Cramleyton for the hub. The former Yorling building, which is that big white building which sits between Concordia and the empty Bingo Hall. It was formerly the Blyth Valley Council headquarters, Supremo, and it's been empty for a while. It's a modern building. I've been in it a few times over the last year. And with a little bit of TLC and a little bit of work inside, it's going to become a fantastic live asset for the people in the town. What I'm really excited about from this, some of the stuff that Nathan's touched on, one is absolutely the engagement which is going on through the town council with Maggie and Steve, but also the Communities Together team in Northumberland. But I'm really pleased that one of the things that I know we are looking at is how we can involve schools, how we can involve some element of vocational training. So that is training people to get into employment, but also helping people to retrain, to rethink about new employment as we come out of COVID. The mental health support in there, I think, is going to be fantastic. I am aware of a significant project which is going to be incoming into Cramleyton, which I can't really go into any detail about here, but it is a very significant, what I would call a mental health wellbeing programme. And what we have with this, with the library, the community cafe, the public space, the space that you can use, the space if you're a small community group, you can come in and you can access the training, the upskilling, working with young people, older people. We have got something very unique in Cramleyton. We will be leading the way for Northumberland in what a community looks like and how it can reimagine place-based support. So I am, having been involved with this from the very beginning, so excited that we are going to have a phenomenal offer, which actually this town council is helping to shape and to frame and to influence. So Nathan, it's not really set of questions, it's just saying, I think it's really good and I'm really looking forward to it coming to life and everyone in Cramleyton benefiting from it. So well done, everyone who's been involved.
Yeah, yeah. Well said. Bob and then Christine.
Two quick questions. You're talking about opening in April. Does that mean the library will move before April, before the opening?
Yes, that is the intention.
Right, so over the next months, the library will be moved. Yeah, I think that's something that perhaps we should be thinking about publicising, otherwise we'll have the nurses protesting outside again.
Yeah, no, of course. What I would say on that is I just had a meeting earlier today with the library service to talk about some of that stuff. So they are just busy working out how they're going to put those notices out, so they'll be coming to light pretty quickly.
Okay. The second question is just seeking an assurance that charges for community use of rooms and so on will be reasonable.
Yes, absolutely. So there will be elements of the building that will be free. So depending on what the requirements are, there may be some small charges on aspects, but we are going to be really minimal because the finance is being balanced elsewhere within the building.
That's good. Thank you.
Christine. And then Barry. And then Paul. Okay, Christine.
Yeah, done it. I might just, I know you might say, yes, I'm going to ask the question anyway. Are these little community groups who use that building going to have access to internet and print facilities? Because in the past, I think, oh, Maggie, how many pages of poppies and flags and bunting are printed out for the Eastfield Community Association? It was hundreds last May. So are these little groups, sometimes have groups that haven't got the access to get little flyers out and things like that, so will they have?
No, that's, it's a really, really good point. So there will definitely be wifi access for the building. And there will also be access to some IT equipment. So for example, there will be tablets available in the building as well as some public access machines. There will also be sort of a working back office which will have stuff like printers which will be accessible.
Oh, that's brilliant. Well, if I've got any excess paper, I'll donate it. Anything I can do to help support the Yorling building, thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Barry, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was just going to say something we've wanted to see for a while, so it's really pleasing that this is going on. Obviously, with this moving fairly soon, we really need to have a comms strategy on this, particularly in the next three weeks with all Pirda. So I look forward to that and I won't keep you too long because I can see you're still at county hall. So that's basically, you know, it's really pleasing to see this happening. The library needs a proper space because it's not a proper space at the moment. And I very much welcome it, thank you.
Yeah.
Lovely. Thank you. Paul, please.
Oh, yes, thank you, Chair. So I'm really pleased to hear that the library is eventually opening in April 25th, so it's really good news. There are lots of people in my ward who would like to see the library opened up when the, you know, things return to normality. And also, I would like to thank Mr Fuller for all the work he had done so far, it is really good. And of course, to people like Wayne Daly who conceived this idea and then brought pots of money. So overall, it's all bearing fruits. It's nice to see everything come to fruition. Thanks for everyone who worked on this one. It's really a good thing for the town council, for the town, sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Well, everyone's happy, Nathan, so you can go away very happy yourself. Just one more. Mark's just put his hand up. Mark?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick questions, Nathan. There has been a lot of concern over a couple of services, NCC services in the existing building. And that's with regards to the current frontline council services and also the registrar service and the lack of like confidentiality and privacy with those. Can I just ask what's happening with those services when everything moves and, you know, where they're going to be? And is there going to be that privacy and confidentiality when they do move?
Yeah, absolutely. It's something that has been looked at quite closely. So in terms of their customer services function, which was obviously there previously, that is going to be within the building. It will look a little bit different to what it has previously, so the staff will be working a little bit more agile across the building, but they will be there. And the registrar service are also going to be present in that building and they are going to be located on the first floor in a private room, which is going to be dedicated to them full-time.
That's really good to hear because I know that even the registrars were very embarrassed at trying to handle very sensitive situations while those children's parties going on in the next room and people passing by the door. So to, you know, to recognise that it's now being dealt with properly and, you know, in private, sort of secluded areas is a massive plus point. And I know that many people would be pleased to hear about that, so thanks very much for that.
No problem.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? So we can let Nathan go then, can we? Barry, you've still got your hand up. Can you take it down? I can't, but on the screen. Right. So thank you, thank you, Nathan, very much for that.
No problem at all. It was great chatting to you. And if anybody's got any questions at any point moving forward, I'm happy to be contacted direct as well.
Right, lovely. Thank you very, very much.
Lovely. Take care, everyone. Bye.
Thanks. Bye-bye. Okay, moving on, agenda item number six, and I'll hand over to John, please.
Yeah, very briefly, just to refresh your memory that last year, our previous auditor had to give up the real health and we secured the services of Michael Monroe. He's actually impressed me with the quality of the queries he's raised and the work he's done. He's presented the report so that you could have the confirmation that the work has been done. Also that I can send a copy in due course to our external auditors just to verify that you guys are on the ball. The good thing is, he's done an awful lot of work, but there's, as I hope, there is actually nothing to draw to your attention. So if there are any queries-
Any queries or observations from anyone? No? Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, and Maggie's just going to point out some salient points of her wonderful report.
Yeah, I'm just going to keep this brief. Thank you. The things I wanted to pick up on is Friends of Donovan Woods Group. It's been one of the success stories. It is now, there's a group of residents that have taken over the group, they've got their own constitution and they are close to raising about four and a half thousand pounds to create the bee hives, create hives, bird boxes and, you know, create an area that they want, rather than sort of the area that they've had with the antisocial behaviour in there. So that's one of the really positive stories. And the food distribution hub is the other one. So we had a massive donation of SIF cleaning bottles, which was fantastic. And because we've got a food distribution hub, it could go to one source and then that could be distributed out to lots of different organisations. And the same's happened with ambulance, our donating- And the same's happened with ambulance are donating a load of Easter eggs. And again, it can come to one source and it can go out to lots of different organisations in Cramton through the hub. And community allotment project is getting landscaped from the beginning of April. So we are looking at keeping the June-July opening for their community allotment. And the last thing that I'm going to mention is the digital champions training as we're halfway through the course. And again, it's been going really well. We had 20 people sign up. Not everybody could attend each week, but because they are being recorded and they're going out to lots of groups, people that can actually make those sessions can still take part in it as well. And I'm going to hand over to Steve to do the youth part.
I just asked Maggie, great that you mentioned about the SIF packs. Great. Did we just conveniently forget about the Maltesers as well?
Oh, yes, and Maltesers that give us chocolate. How could you forget chocolate?
Indeed. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do that complete with chocolate, but I'll try my best. Just two from me tonight. The youth circle is now going to be called the Cramlington Youth Council. We're just busy putting the finishing touches on the flyer for that. And then we're going to advertise it for our channel. So I'll be sending it all to the councillors. And if you don't mind, passing it on to your networks as well. Anybody aged 14 to 17 can apply. And the plan, the aim for that group is just to give young people a voice in Cramlington. And the second thing for me is we've had a lot of positive meetings with an organisation called Northumberland Domestic Abuse Service. On the back of those really positive meetings, we've conducted some Cramton-based organisations that we know work with young people and do delivery. They have put together a proposal of how they would work with children who are at risk of domestic abuse. And we've presented their proposals to the Northumberland Domestic Abuse Service. And then they're going to make the final decision on which organisations they want to do. We'll be piloting two schemes, one aimed at primary school children and one aimed at secondary school. So again, once we, once we know what organisations will be doing that delivery, we'll give everybody an update. And that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions from anything Maggie or Steve have said, please? Observations, questions? Wayne, then Christine.
Hello. Thank you, Maggie. That's a world record.
I know, I know. I'm doing my best to keep it brief.
I was timing you there. Well done. Really good report as ever from both of you. Just a couple of things if I can, just very quickly. You mentioned there about the food and obviously the food banks. And I think they're fantastic. I think we also need to be thinking, and I know you're already on to this, we ought to be thinking a little bit more beyond the food banks, which is about how we can encourage people and help people to cook on budgets, to actually cook as well. Because, you know, I'm as guilty as anybody of my microwaves, like heavily used in my kitchen. But obviously trying to embed cooking skills with young people. And actually, it's a great intergenerational thing. There's a lot of mature people who've got loads of skills on making pies and all those things, which is a bit of a lost art for some people. I just think it's such a good opportunity with the new hub that we've heard about to actually fuse those together to get that intergenerational work going. And, you know, jump on the back of things like the Great British Bake Off and Pie Week and all those things and get not just the issue of food banks supported, but also encouraging people to think beyond and embed some skills. That was number one. So are we doing something about that? And number two, it's just an observation. So I think I am the only one on this call elected who was elected at the very first Cramlington Town Council meeting in 2009. And in those days, we did, and Bob can correct me, allotments and parks. That was it. And it was basically, pretty much what we did was so tiny and almost insignificant. And look at us now from 2009 to 2021. We have a youth and community team. We are, look, we are, we recruit, we actually employ our own staff to make Cramlington cleaner and greener. We have embedded community at the heart of everything we do. We are spending money on our communities. We are probably, no, I'm going to correct myself. We are the leading town and parish council in Northumberland. And I would probably argue in the North East in terms of what we do, how we do it, the way we do it, and the impact of what we do. So from somebody who was first elected in 2009, when I remember the teeny weeny little council that did very little, and it's emerged to this, and that's, you know, and I'll put on record, thanks to Bob Baker as well. Because I think Bob has led us fantastically since 2009. And I just want to commend all the current officers, those who've been in the past. And long may we continue to show councils how you do it. That's all I wanted to say.
Wayne, why did you stop at the North East? You could have gone for the UK.
Oh, I didn't want to exaggerate. But yeah, let's go world.
Dave's waving madly here, but Christine wasn't.
Just to let Wayne know, I was actually.
I was going to say, I thought you were Dave.
Yeah. Sorry.
Dave, Dave, my apologies. It's my age and I have a very poor memory.
Don't worry, Wayne. You're not alone. You're not alone.
My apologies. If you were here, I would hug you, but I'm not allowed. There you go.
I thought he was here. Sorry, Dave. Christine, where are you? There you are, sweetie. And then Maggie.
And can I just respond to Wayne's about the food distribution?
Christine, do you mind?
Is that okay? Sorry, Christine. It's just that it's definitely something the food distribution hub are looking at. It's, they're looking at sustainable solutions. They're looking at those intergenerational projects where, you know, they can learn from each other. They're looking at things like bringing in slow cookers. So it's saving money, saving energy, that kind of thing as well. So it's not just about feeding people, it's having sustainable solutions to food distribution within Cramlet and then beyond. So just to kind of, you know, that is something that we are definitely doing.
Okay, Christine, and then Mark. Mark, you haven't put your hand up, have you? You've got it on the screen. You're very good. Christine, next.
Maggie, your Wild Spaces hub. I need to tap into your contacts. I think, you know, last March, Noel and I and community groups extended a small woodland down at Eastfield Lee. Got about 200 little trees, putting some saplings. But obviously with lockdown and Covid, the desperate need of some attention. And I'm willing to buy the chippings to put around the wood, chippings and everything. But if you can help support with your contacts, so we can organise an action day. If it's possible. We really need, otherwise we're going to lose some of those trees. And, you know, it was for the, I think the squirrel group helped and Eastfield School and some of the community scouts. I'm going to try and get them all together, but that'd be great if you've got tree people who love trees. That'd be fantastic. Thank you. All the rest you're doing is absolutely fantastic.
Just in response to that, that's exactly what the Wild Spaces hub is there to do. It's about organisation, sharing knowledge, sharing skills, sharing volunteers. So it's just not people having to do these things on their own. They can kind of pick up and they can, you know, go and help each other. And so as part of that, there is Northumberland Wildlife Trust. That's why we've had 750 trees planted, you know, because they linked in with a cancer charity. And that, you know, that's what they did. They created the memorial. It's things like the Friends of. So it means community, if they want to take ownership of that and, you know, they can put in for their own funding and things like that as well. So the idea of these hubs are for people, you know, community groups to have added strength by working together.
That's brilliant. I mean, I've got the trees from the woodland trust. But if we don't get them sort of tender love and care, we're going to lose them. But yeah, fantastic if you could just let us know and we'll try and fix it when it's possible.
Brilliant. Sounds good.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Christine. And your response, Maggie. Right. Mark and then Barry, please.
Thank you, Chair. So Maggie, I wanted to thank you for your help with the Friends of Dodden Wood. Now, as I've mentioned in the group meeting, Adam, there, it is very much a community-led scheme. Because it's been locked down, we haven't been able really to go out and promote that. But already the Facebook group has got 89 people as members. And so what's it going to grow to once we can promote that? And so it's really fantastic that already, before we've started to do anything, we've got such a massive following on that. And as I've already made it before, apologies, I can't make tomorrow's group meeting because, sorry, next week.
Next week.
Got something on already. But I'm really keen to see where this is actually going to go. Because so many people are so interested in that area before we've even had a real opportunity to promote it and to get it actually off the ground. But thank you so much for the work that you've already done with regards to that. And I can't wait to see where it's going to go.
Again, that's why I didn't want to say too much about what's going on there because it's about what the community wants for that area as well. It's, you know, it's about linking them with the right people that, you know, that they can see their ideas grow and happen. So thank you as well, Mark.
Thank you. Maggie, you kept your report so brief. Bless you. It's all the questions. It's all the questions. Barry.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend the work of the Wildlife Trust in my area. We've got the funding for the pavilion, which I've put some money from my small member scheme towards. It's very different to Eastfield Pavilion, I've got to say. But it's excellent. And I was up there with itself and seen all the tree planting, more real planting, what have we, and it's all go there. And as we come out of Covid, it'll be all go even more. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Again, with the Wildlife Trust, it's, you know, it's different things we're getting involved in with them. Like this Monday, we're having celebrations around International Women's Day. Because let's face it, Northumberlandia is the lady of the north. So we want to showcase Northumberlandia as the lady of the north from Monday. So we've got lots of different groups and organisations that are doing showcasing what they're doing. So there's three female architects that were involved in that, Barry. And they're kind of giving a brief history of women in architecture. We have got local artists that's doing arts and crafts all around Matisse, you know, things that people can get in touch with. We've had lots of positive quotes from women about women that inspire them. So if anybody wants to share any positive quotes, you know, for that, we can put those out on Monday as well. So there's lots of things happening and that was an idea that came from the Wildlife Trust and said it's something they wanted to link to do together.
Okay, thank you. For our popular lady.
I could talk all day about the work I do. I love it.
Yes, it shows. Agenda item number eight. Carol, please.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening and welcome.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, in terms of grounds maintenance and street clearing, the partnership team are coming at the end of the Winter Works Programme. As you're all aware, our contractual agreement with the county council is coming to an end at the end of this month. So we will be out on the ground making sure that we're satisfied with what work has been undertaken. And if there's any issues, we'll be aiming to address those with NCC officers in terms of grounds maintenance and street clearing. In addition to the standard and agreed programme, the teams were out during this reporting period, clearing snow and treating areas such as the cycle tracks and footpaths in summer state roads for ice prevention. And in addition to that, our own teams, our own in-house Cramlington Town Council operations team also assisted with those works. As you can see, in the past eight weeks, we've cleared 20 instances of fly tipping and 8,300 kilograms of general street litter was collected. Our bush shelters and playgrounds are operating as normal. There's no major issues at the moment. There is some construction works happening on a couple of the sites, as you are aware, on the project that Adam Harvey's leading on for the refurb. There's been no major issues identified on an ops level for those. Environmental enforcement, our environmental enforcement officer's been really active all the way through lockdown. You know, there's been a lot of work on, there's been a lot of investigations ongoing in terms of fly tipping. And for some reason, we're getting a lot of abandoned vehicles in Cramton, but they are all getting uplifted. And the EU is liaising with the DSA to get those uplifted through the VAIL scheme. And for those members that don't know what a VAIL is, a VAIL is the partnership between Northumberland County Council and Northern British Police. So if a vehicle is found to be abandoned for more than five days, then the police come along and uplift it and it gets impounded and the register keepers contacted. The council connect scheme, we are getting there. We're more or less coming to an end. The goalposts in the north of the town, they have been completed, installed and completed. And the benches that have been located in various locations, there've been eight benches that run through the village, south east and eastwards, they have all been completed, they're all installed. And we're going to do a little bit of comms on it. I'm going to pass some information to Jane Coleman to get some information out there for locations for members of the public. Operations expansion team, that's all going really well. We're in the final stages now of implementing that team. We've appointed a grounds maintenance supervisor and Jamie is now in post and is now heavily active with the existing team. And we have appointed two additional grounds and general maintenance operatives and they're due to start at the end of this month. In advance of those guys turning up, we have arranged a training day. So they are coming in prior to the start date to do some mandatory training on working practices of the town council and on the equipment they will be using as part of their role. So I'd like to make, when we want to grip in provision, I think this will attract some questions. But yeah, in order to control current and existing provision, it's proposed that we adopt a similar approach and policy of the county council. And the reason for that is because the background is that we get a period of snow and we are inundated with requests from members of the public and members for additional grip bins. And the reality is that, you know, the 90% of that material is not used. So we do get a period of snow, we might get a couple of weeks of snow. But, you know, for the rest of the winter, they don't get used. And grit has a shelf life. So when we fill it at the start of the winter period, at the end of the winter period, it's disposed of. So all of that material does get wasted for the sake of installing a grip bin for the sake of a few requests that an area that doesn't require it. And we know that, you know, a lot of the provision we provide is used for private property. We've witnessed that, we've seen it, we've had reports of it. So I would, you know, along with the town clerk, we've, we're kind of proposing to full council tonight that we do approach an alternative approach whereby we adopt the same policy as Northumberland County Council. However, in exceptional circumstances, the town clerk, in consultation with the chairman of DSM, additional provision could be provided. I don't know, before I move on, has any members got any questions in relation to that?
Barry has. And Dave. Barry first, please.
I can, I can understand the logic in that. However, my concern is for new builder estates. And although they might not be adopted at the moment and things like that, I do think it would be very unfair on residents in those areas to have these new, you know, measures put in where other areas have added the liberal small well measures in terms of what happens. That would be, that would just be one comment I would make.
Yeah, in terms of providing.
Can I just respond to that question, please?
Yes, of course. Bob, go ahead.
In terms of new estates, until the roads are adopted, it's actually the responsibility of the developer to provide any grid facility. And after the adoption, it is actually the county council's responsibility to provide grip bins. What we do is we provide additional bins. And we have in Cramlington more bins already than the other districts put together. I mean, Adam can give us chapter and verse about the number of bins we have.
Wasn't it 118 you said last time? 118?
But it would be very unfair if one estate of 400 houses, say, had half a dozen because of their legacy ones, for want of a better word from ourselves, and another estate with exactly the same topography or whatever, didn't have any from Crampton Town Council. That would be my concern. And I understand it's going to be a couple of years before we're adopted and things like that. But that would be my, that would just be a concern I would have. It's a long-term thing. I understand that. But it's just something I'd have as a concern.
The only response I would make, Chair, is I think there is a facility to move the bins. So we look more priority areas if members want to tell us where those priority areas are and where bins aren't currently being used. Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think exactly what the town clerk's saying. We need to utilise our current stock because of the volume we've got. And there will be bins up there that won't get used. Members will know better than anybody. You know, we can look at the data where we get requests for refills and things like that. But yeah, I think if we want to provide additional, I think we have to utilise the current stock.
Thank you. Dave, next, please.
Right, I'm going to do a terrible thing and request a bin. You know, it's just, it's in an area where the street is actually on a hill. And when you're coming up the street, it's the actual. And when you're coming up the street, it's the actual brow of the hill where they're having problems, right? To be honest, it would be the only bin I've ever requested, you know, because mostly, you know, the area is fairly flat within my ward, you know, so, but this one's actually on a hill, this street's actually on a hill. So I'd be prepared to say that Darrell have all the information already gone and we'll come with a discussion, Bob. With Darren.
Yeah, the procedure is, Chair, that any application should be made to the county council in the first instance. Because they are the provider of grip bins.
Why would I have to, as a town councillor, why would I have to apply to the county council?
Because it's the county council's responsibility.
So you're saying I can't have it then basically, Bob?
No, I'm saying that it's.
I've got to apply as a town councillor to the county councillor to have a grip bin where everybody's here is getting an abundance of grip bins. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that you could actually approach your county councillor for the south east and ask him to request from the county.
Dave, Dave, excuse me, can you let Bob finish, please?
Okay, I already know what he's going to say, but carry on.
You're a mind reader. Well done.
Aren't we all?
No.
What we're trying to do is to reduce the county, the town council's resource used on grip bin provision. Because it is a county council responsibility. Now, if you're talking about new bins, in the first instance, the application should be made to the town county council. And I would suggest that it's best made through the county councillor for your area.
So why, right, Bob, have bins been allowed in the past?
Bins have been allowed in the past because they've been demanded by the town council and the majority of the town council. What we are saying.
You're demanding a bin.
If I could, if I could just.
Finish.
If, if the town council wants it, then it will be provided for. But the town council must appreciate there is a resource implication in providing bins. And they have to be paid for. We already spend over £6,000 a year on renewing grit in the bins that we provide now. If the town council wants to spend its money in that way, that's fine. But I would advise you that most of that grit and salt is wasted. Year in, year out, as we get milder and milder winters. This year, we've had one period of bad weather, which lasted just about a week or so. And everybody wants a bin. And, well, it's just simply not worth it. You know, you have to, you have resource responsibilities, you have responsibilities to the way I do at any rate. I'm the responsible financial officer and I have a responsibility to the way the money is used.
Yeah, you must have been aware that I was going to ask for one because I've explained this to Darrell and you've come up with this new scheme, right? Which you haven't actually said what the rules are that scheme are, you've just said you're going to adopt it, right? And you must have known I was going to ask for it. I think a case of you digging your heels in, Bob, because you didn't want, because you didn't want to have that extra cost. Careful of your question. My ward for one bit. Here one bit. Sorry.
Listen, you can't, we can't do this when you're both speaking. What is the problem with you asking your own county councillor, David? I don't understand what the problem is.
What's the problem with me being the town councillor, asking the town councillor when that's been the policy in the past? Right, I requested this before this policy came in. I requested a bin through Darrell, right, and he said I would have to speak to Bob. I come to this meeting today, right, now they've suddenly changed the policy. Right, because Bob wants to dig his heels in about the grip bins, right?
We don't need to make personal comments.
I'm not having a personal attack here, Bob, but. If I've been a bonnet with grip bins for years.
Because it's wasted resource.
Yeah. And I've now gone up my way to waste the resource, have I? By asking for a grip bin in the past. Now we've got an area where there has been a few close calls on the corner and I have, for health and safety reasons, I've asked for a grip bin, right? Now you change your tune, Bob, and I'm not allowed and I'm going to ask county council. I think that's such a disgrace, complete and utter disgrace. I'm sorry.
You're saying I am in utter disgrace? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying? I'm in utter disgrace? Are you saying I am in utter and complete disgrace?
I'm saying the decision is a complete and utter disgrace.
There is no decision as yet because the town council hasn't voted on the adoption of the county council standard.
Right, okay then. In fact, you put it forward after this is disgrace.
Can we just, can we just, can we just calm down a minute, please? Can I just ask a question? Perhaps Bob and David, can you sort this out probably tomorrow or another?
It's not an argument, Lorraine, it's not an argument.
Well, you're raising voices, David, and now you're speaking everything. You're raising voices and I don't want that happening in my meetings.
Because I'm the sole neighbour cannae live here and all of a sudden it gets you.
But that isn't anyone's.
I asked for one thing.
Chair, can I, can I just come in?
Yes, Wayne.
I think we're in danger of ending up all over the internet with another Jackie Weaver thing here.
Yes, and I'm not she.
Let's just, if we can just clarify, David, I have just gone onto my phone now to look. Requested grip bin, Northumberland County Council, there's a form, you fill it in. Any member of the public can request a grip bin. So that's number one. Number two, this report came to me last week. I've had a week to look at this. And I don't know if you flagged it up with officers beforehand. If you didn't, that's fair enough. But I'll just finish what I was going to say. And perhaps if I can help by reading section 8.1. What it says is that the town council will align its criteria to the county council. So those criteria are established on the council. And if you want, I can send you the link for how to request a grip bin through the county council. But if the grip bin request comes through the town council, presumably if the threshold for the county isn't met, it is at the discretion given to the town clerk in consultation with the chair of DSM. That's simple. You don't have that facility with the county council. The county council is binary. You either get it or you don't. What we're saying is if that doesn't work, you come here, the clerk and the chair of DSM will look at it to make a revised decision if required. I can't believe that you would find that unfair. And I think anybody watching this.
What I'm seeing is I put the request in before this came out. Well, so I'm basically, I put a request in before that document came out, right?
Well, I can always tell you as well.
They're now coming to tell me I've got to use the new system and got to go to county council.
David, if it's any help, I don't want to bring Barry in, but I know Barry had a request and I know that I've had requests from members of my public as well. So this ain't an attack on you. Trust me.
I'm not thinking it is. I'm not even thinking it is. I just think it's terrible to bring it in. You know, it's like Barry's situation, right? You know, he's got two newer estates on his, you know?
Yeah, so what I'm not, what I'm not understanding.
What I'm saying is, right?
Through the, through the chair.
Request was in.
Can I just come in? Can I just come in here for two seconds?
Darrell, just one second. Can I just say something to the chair? I don't understand what it is that anyone is having a problem understanding in section 8.1. We align the county council criteria for the grip bins, but in exceptional circumstances, that's presumably when a grip bin from the county council isn't approved, discretion will be given to the town clerk in consultation with the chair of DSM. Actually, that's a really good system.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that, right? What I'm disagreeing about is the fact that I put the request in before this came out, right?
Right, right, okay. Can I speak, please? And I just feel we're going round in circles here. We really are going round in circles. And we've got.
No, I'll follow the system, Lorraine. I'm just thinking, I've been hard done by the fact that I put the request in, right? Now we're going to vote on a new system, right? And I've actually got to go through the new system when I had already put the request in. That's all I'm going on about.
Okay, okay. But I don't, you keep saying it's a new system. I don't know how new it is. From Wayne, it seems as if it isn't new, but.
Sorry, can I just add to that, Tom?
Oh, six questions, right.
Sorry, it's.
Paul, I know you're in the queue. Just a second, Adam. Wayne and Christine, you had your hands up long before. I don't need, put them up together. Ladies first, so it'll be Christine, then Wayne, once Adam's spoken. It'll be Christine, then Wayne, then Paul, then Barry, then Bob. Is that okay? Good, right, Adam.
Sorry, it's just, it follows on from what you've just said there. And I've got some minutes here from the DSM committee from July 2008, where this report was agreed regarding about grip provision. Because it seems to go around in circles every year. And the town clerk advised members to consider current grip bin locations to identify possible areas of relocation. And members were advised that any new considerations for gripping for vision should be initially requested go to Northumberland County Council.
And that dates. 2008.
And that dates back to July 2018.
Right, let's put this to bed. David, I'm sorry, let's put this to bed. Can I just say? Pat, welcome. Welcome to Pat. I've seen you join the meetings. I'm just seeing, I'll hear you.
Hi, thank you, thank you.
All right, love. Right, and can we go then? Ladies first. And Christine and Wayne, both put your hands up together, but it's ladies first. Christine.
Right, Bob, I'm quite happy to give over to you, seeing you are our town clerk for me.
And mine was a legacy handchair from previously.
So Bob, do you want to go before me? I'm quite happy to give.
It was just to say in response to councillor Murray's claim that he made a request. I mean, perhaps Darrell could provide me with that, the email of, a copy of the email relating to that request and the date of.
Yeah, I can tell you what, I can confirm that me and councillor Murray did have a conversation on the phone about grip bins. But I did advise councillor Murray that I wasn't able to make that decision because it was an added asset and it was additional expenditure that would have to go to council. And there hasn't been a council since, so this was the next council coming up. So I couldn't, I couldn't put that request through until we got to council. However, I knew that this new policy was coming in. But I didn't.
Okay, do you know what, guys? The summer's coming. No more grip bins. Right. Christine, had you finished?
I hadn't even started.
Wait, go on then.
Did Darrell want to take any points from other things prior to the grip bin thing? I can't add something to grip bins if you want, but I was gonna, I want to make it by tipping and benches. Would you want me to say it now or do you want to wait till the end of your report?
I've got one more item on my report and then I can come back. You can zoom out. I'm totally.
Yeah, okay, I've got, right, regarding the grip bins, I asked for one moved on the pressure from the community. Moved one that was originally mine and I went to check it this winter under very, very bad weather there the other week. And it hadn't even been touched by the community. So that's just a point that I want to make. Regarding the fly tipping, I would like, I know this is awful, but I would really like a priority on the fly tipping that's been done in Eastfield. Lee, on Sunday of the weekend, there was a fly, there was a mattress dumped by some young children, youths. I reported it straight away, obviously late on Friday night, couldn't be removed. I was happy with that, but on the Sunday afternoon, they came back and set it light. Now, going to carry on having fly tipping when I report them, obviously in office hours, you know, the working operatives hours, there's nothing you can do late at night. Could it be seen as a priority to get it removed in cases and more instances of arson?
Yeah, no problem. Was that, whereabouts, was that the one in A and three?
Yes, it was. It's usually a dumping ground for fly tipping, just near that little car park. Yeah, that would be great. And regarding your benches, I don't know if you're talking about any benches, but Norman and I pulled our funds together to get an NHS bench in Parkside. Is there still a delay with them?
The NHS bench, was that for the parts of small member schemes?
Yes, yeah.
I'll double check that. I'll double check that.
Asked for that and I said whatever was left over would go towards the planting for all the estate gardens around the new signs and everything. And I have got another one after the playground, but I'll wait till you do that bit for me.
Thank you, Christine. Wayne, you did have your hand up. Do you still want to ask a question?
No, I'll wait till the end.
Okay, right, that's lovely. Barry?
Just on a point of clarification, suggested we needed a vote on the grip bin provision. From what Adam says, this is actually already the policy. So I don't actually understand what we'd be voting on. It just seems to me a clarification of what the policy was.
Yeah, I'll just clarify for us.
Waving his finger. I don't know. Sorry, Adam.
Yeah, so the, the policy which is being proposed is to adopt the county council policy for their criteria, what classes of eyes, is a location required for a grip bin. The current request to county council is something that's already in place at the moment anyway. It's just to formally adopt the county council policy for grip bins, location criteria.
That's very straightforward to me. Those are the county councils. If the county councils say yes, happy days. If the county council say no, we come and bring it here and reconsider it, basically.
Yeah, and that would be Bob and Mark.
I think that, you know, it seems perfectly logical to me. Thank you.
Just one, just one quick one. And I'm not trying to start an argument again or whatever. Has any council grip, town council grip bins been put in place since 2018?
18.
Sorry, Bob?
It was 2018.
Yeah, 2018.
Well, has it since then?
I would have to have a look and come back to it. I don't know that. Yeah, I'll go through and have a look.
Okay, Paul, I'm very sorry. I think there was a bit queue jumping. I'm really sorry. Excuse me. Have you got a question?
Okay, yeah, no, I was just want to make a remark. I can understand the frustrations of Dave. But, you know, in certain areas, I went and checked just before the bad weather. And most of the grip bins were awful. So it's one thing to have a grip bin and another thing, people actually coming and, you know, taking it and using it for the public. These are two different things. So I can understand the hesitation. So we are filling in the bin, but it gets unused. So I can understand that as well. So I'm just wondering whether as a town council, we can provide a smaller bin so that things are not wasted. Or if in the older bins, we just fill it off and then we will see, you know, it's some kind of alternative mechanism. Yeah, it's important we keep the cost to the minimum, we reduce the waste because it's not good to waste the grit. Because it goes out of use. So therefore, my suggestion is that we should also explore other alternatives like smaller bins or filling it, filling it more frequently, filling it off, but you know, that kind of a thing.
Could that be, could that be done, Darrell? Is it a possibility? I don't know. Half filling them?
In terms of the technical detail, I would have to look into that and come at you.
It just seems an unnecessary expense to buy smaller bins, but yeah, half full, I would have thought, might be an alternative, but I don't know. If you could, come back to us, that'd be lovely.
Yeah.
Thank you. Right, we finish with grip bins because I'm losing the will to live here. Shall we move on, Darrell, on your report?
Yeah. Yeah, just item nine. So during the winter period, there's a few of our playgrounds that are very, become very unusable due to the, due to the current servicing, which is, which is grass matten. Which, you know, after high volumes of use becomes very muddy. We get, you know, we're getting concerns for residents, for service users, for members of the public. So part of this report, we've looked at alternative servicing for one of the worst play areas, which is Horton Park. I don't know if anybody, I know obviously Wade and Helen have seen it and Adam and Bob, it is quite bad in the winter. So we've approached our strategic playground supplier in order to look to put a more resilient services down. So it's very similar to wet pool, but it's constructed in a way so that it's. um, resilient services down. So it's, it's very similar to wet pool, but it's, it's, it's constructed in a way so that it's, it's more or less anti-vandal. Um, and, and to put that in, to install that, to, to excavate, put the, the correct foundations in and then to lay the surface in. Seasonly report twenty five thousand pound, that was an anticipated cost. It's actually coming at thirty two thousand. Um, this can, you know, this scheme can be looked at, um, from next year's twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, um, budget. Um, and as you can see within the report as well, it's not the only playground that is suffering from these conditions. And so what I want to do is I want to go straight on to my recommendations is to look at approving this scheme at thirty two thousand pound for Horton Park and then look to, I think the town clerk wants to come in. Um, I'll pass you up at the town clerk.
That's good. Thank you, Bob.
Sure, sure. Well, what we're proposing about playground resurfacing is a program to resurface initially the worst of the, uh, th- those playgrounds with the worst ground conditions. And we've identified, uh, four, which we feel should be priorities. Those are uh, Horton Park, Mortimer, Westfield and Norwich Way. Um, it's not a cheap process, uh, but the reason I'm proposing a program, a two-year program to initially tackle those four areas is because it is actually essential work and the, the longer we leave it, the, uh, the worse the problem will get. It's, it's essentially a problem of a combination of, of weather, of bad drainage and an unsuitable, uh, surface treatment at the present time. Now, what we're looking at is a sort of eco mulch type approach, uh, which we hope will be uh, resilient to any vandalism. Um, particularly if we ensure that CCTV cameras are installed to monitor, uh, the playgrounds, uh, which we would, uh, do accompanying the, uh, replacement of the surface. So, uh, what we're really asking for is permission to, uh, look into a program, a two-year financial program commencing in, uh, two thousand, well, next financial year from April, uh, that would allow us to do this.
Okay, thank you, Bob. So, yes, Adam.
Sorry, I just want to add that, um, I will be in discussions with other providers, um, in the coming weeks to see if we can beat that thirty two thousand pound call that we'll have received from Hags.
Okay, thank you. Christine.
Right. What, I'd like to make a proposal that you've got initially these four parks that are really desperate that, and you've got the two-year program. Maybe could we look at trying to resurface as many of the other parks that needed doing? You know, um, in the future, you know, as a rolling program continuously, you know, if it's effective because I don't, I think Eastfield Park doesn't get that boggy, but I still get concerns and complaints about it. And would it be possible if I couldn't get it through the town council, could I use my small schemes funding for it?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I think one of the things I'll be looking at is any external funds that may be available um, to support this. But we, we are looking at very substantial amounts of money to get a really put a service surfaced down on these playgrounds. And I regard it as an investor, investor approach. But yes, of course, we'll be looking at all playgrounds, particularly those high usage ones.
Especially and, and Eastfield as well, because it's to my heart, I think.
Okay, thank you. Um, right, so the recommendations then from Daryl's report is the committee is asked to, A, note.
Sorry, just before you go.
Oh, how were?
Just come in, sorry. I haven't said, I haven't said anything during this meeting, although I chip in.
Um, and your hand wasn't up, so that's why I continue.
It was, it was there. So anyway, I'll just be, honestly, I'll be really brief. Um, I appreciate the fact it may sound like, um, a large sum of money, but I can assure you that both Helen and I, it is probably the biggest single um, complaint that we get around the Northburn area. It is boggy and swampy. There are huge pools of water and mud and the kids come off there. I mean, the kids, you know, some kids love it, but they absolutely come off that site filthy.
The parents don't like it, Wayne.
The parents definitely don't like it and they normally come in like PPE equipment and everything. But seriously, I, I, I can promise you that this is absolutely needed for that park. Um, and I just want to say one other thing if I can. On Friday night, uh, just before six o'clock, Helen alerted me and I came along and I met her to part of the work which has been done down there, some, um, new cotton being put in. And there was a fence that was open. We called the town council and within about twenty minutes, Daryl turned up to actually fix that barrier, which could have presented a danger to some people if they'd been got in and, and, uh, you know, falling down one of the, the holes or whatever. Um, and I just want to put on record the, um, genuine appreciation, Daryl, and Adam and the rest of the team for doing that. Um, you were there and you wait, you turned up when Helen and I were standing guard. Um, so I just want to thank you for that. It, it genuinely was appreciated. I just wanted to put that on record.
Thank you, Wayne, and well done to Daryl et al. Okay, so, um, right, so we need to, um, as a committee, note the report. Um, B, to adopt and enforce the amended grit bin policy outlined in section eight point one. Um, and approve the thirty two thousand of playground resurfacing works at Horton Park set out in section nine. So the, the report is obviously noted. We've spent ages discussing it, um, but that's noted. Um, can we adopt and enforce the amended grit bin policy? Point B, I mean, do we vote on this or do we, anyone's got any objections? Anybody wishing to object?
Believe it or not, I'll second that. Because I've got no problem with the policy.
Well, well done, David. Thank you.
There you go.
Everyone else, is everyone else in agreement? And what about point C? Approve the thirty two thousand spend of the playground resurfacing works at Horton Park. Yes, okay, lovely job, Lee.
This is one, one point, Chair, my, that thirty two thousand is subject to alternative bids.
Yes, sorry, Bob. I know it was twenty five, but I understand it was early days when that came in, but thank you. So it could be less than that.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
That would be good.
Check, can I just make one point and I'll promise I'll be no more than thirty seconds. It's just for the benefit of clarity for everybody. Anyone, any member of the public watching this who lives in Cramlington or anywhere in Northumberland can go online to Northumberland County Council's website to request a grit bin. They can do it themselves. If for any reason, members get involved in that because a member of the public has said that they can't get a grit bin and obviously there is criteria, can't just have one because you want one outside your house. But if those criteria aren't met, our policy aligns to that. So that's what we adhere to. But we have an exception under the, um, the powers of the clerk and the Chair of the DSM to look at that again and to consider it based on local factors. Doesn't mean you'll get it. What it means is we have an extra level of support and surety for our communities. And I just want to make that clear. We're not saying nobody's getting the grit bin because ideally they should come from the county council because they are the statutory provider, but that's what the policy says.
So you're saying members of the public can ring NCC?
They can go online, Chair.
Go online, but do they also, sorry, do they have to fill in a form the same as any of us would have to do?
There is an online form.
Barry, you're on, you're on, Barry, you're on mute.
I was just saying, this is getting extended again. I think we need to move progress, Chair.
Hmm, that's the policy online as well.
Can I just say, everything's online. It's all there. You can get it at county council. We do an extra layer if we can move on. Right.
Yeah, well, yes, yes, I was ready to do so for now, but never mind. Okay, agenda item number nine. Risk management twenty twenty one. Adam, can I hand that to you, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, obviously everyone's received the, the report, um, in advance of the, the meeting. Um, it's just updated. Um, the text in red is the new additions. Um, just, just for approval, please, Chair and rest of the council.
So this item has to re- receive council, council approval every year. This is statutory requirement, Chair.
Okay, so, um, for our approval, is that okay with everyone? Has everybody looked at it?
Yes.
Barry?
I have a quick question. I will be brief, I promise. So on this risk assessment, I've been looking through it. Does this also include the personal safety and risk assessment for our staff? Perhaps like lone working policy and things like that?
We have extensive, um, policies in place with the, the services team, sorry, operations team and, um, ourselves are just separate to this. Um, I'll make sure our line is included in that. It does mention other policies in this, um, document, but I will make sure that line is added as well.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much.
I have one question.
Paul?
Ah, yes, um, I understand these, uh, yellow is for low, yellow is for medium, h- high, hatch for high.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, there is one item, legal liability is shown to be very high. If you look at the first item, legal liability, ensuring activities are within legal powers, the risk is very high. Is there any reason or explanation?
I, I can respond to that. Um, the, the situation is that I'm, I'm not a lawyer. So if there was a legal issue, I would have to seek legal advice and we have solicitors who I'd go to for that purpose. So that comment is effectively that to resolve the high status applied to that particular question.
So do we, do we need to have some legal or a lawyer associated with the Cramlington Town Council?
We already do.
Let me, let me pass that question in two ways. Are we obligated to reduce the risk from hatched to M or L? Number one, because everything else is M and L, only the, only that particular bit is hatched. Therefore, are we obligated as a town council to reduce that risk level to some acceptable M or L? That's my question. That's, that's the first question. Yeah.
Because the, the reality is that, uh, we would seek legal advice on all matters which we beyond the competence of myself or the staff.
Okay.
But we recognize it and we've taken action to resolve it.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, Paul, question answered.
Yeah, I saw in essence, we are not under any obligation to reduce the risk level to pass in, to get any certificate or something.
It's a recognition of the risk level, which is important.
Yeah, okay, yeah, right.
Okay, we, we're all done, yeah. Agenda item number ten, members' questions. Anybody, oh, Paul?
Well, I have a question. Uh, this is, uh, uh, the first thing is about what I asked last time. Uh, there is a land up for sale. It's being sold opposite to Southfield Lee entrance. I asked this question, uh, last time. It is in the minutes as well. Is there any progress? That is my first question, one or two questions. Um, I requested the town council to see who the, the nature of ownership of the newly sold land opposite to the, uh, Southfield Lee entrance because this has been a source of several controversies and this one, uh, is there anything? Was it? Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, Wayne, can you answer?
It, it, um, yes, I actually raised this some time ago with the, uh, one of the senior directors at the county council who can actually source and, um, get details on land ownership. It was still undetermined at that point, Paul, uh, and I know that you've been campaigning heavily on this. Um, uh, what I have been assured is as soon as the disclosure of the ownership is available publicly, because it still isn't publicly available, then we will be told about it. But I think the key thing to remember is we have a town plan which has been adopted and already that land was subject to a refusal, I believe twice, for, um, a caravan park or storage or whatever it was. Um, and so I think there are checks and balances to stop any mad cap schemes there. But, you know, let's, let's just get the information um, and, uh, work with the community to ensure that that is, um, something we deal with. But I think on that point, we have to leave it there, Chair, because otherwise we might stray on to potential matters. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The second question is, if I may, if I may, very quick. They were doing micro-surfacing in Southfield Lee. Yeah, one, two streets were completely not done. So I thought it is just by mistake. So I raised it with the engineer who said, no, this was deliberately left out. So I asked the town council as well as the county council why these two streets were discriminated against the rest of the estate. No information is forthcoming. And also, so the, the residents are asking for either an explanation or whether it will be done at all. So I think we wore them a, a good explanation, I think. So can, 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 I, I mean, I, I am nudging the county council as well. Can the town council also put some request to the county council to see why that, that Windermere is, uh, Windermere Avenue is, uh, in a long street with about at least seventy households. We are not, we are talking about a major road, completely not done. So we need some explanation. Yeah.
Could I come in again on that one? We've got councillor Flux on this. He's Chair of the, of the county council. So could I ask that perhaps councillor Flux takes this up? Is there a matter of urgency with the cabinet lead on highways to get an answer?
Absolutely, I shall. I absolutely, I shall do. I've had some correspondence with Paul the last couple of days on this as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, I was just checking that this what came through today. Okay, anything else? We all, we all talked out. Okay, can I thank Mr Chris Doyle? And please can I make a polite request that you leave now as we prepare for our part two?